What's that?
I can hear you now.
Yesterday when you walked by.
Oh, you.
Nothing of yours.
Call the meeting to order. Stand up for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Duckler is absent. Put those in the storage.
A motion for adoption of the agenda.
I saw more.
And a second?
Second.
Addition, subtractions, corrections. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Communications recognition, open forum, open forum report.
We had one student who spoke up toward the end of the open forum. That was all.
Moving on to board committees. PTA?
PTA meeting, they talked about the fundraiser. The donations totaled $22,771. And the T-shirts were paid for from donations from the businesses, and that was an additional $3,500. So it was a very good fundraiser. They had the roller skating night, and then they had also scheduled the teacher appreciation taco bar for May 8th. And they provided the pizza and ice cream for the winning classrooms on, and how much they raised. So that's already been taken care of too. That was about it. Good, yeah. Jan works really hard, and I've mentioned that before. She really does a good job.
World's best workforce.
Melissa, you want to do that one?
Yeah. It was interesting, it was the first one I ever had the opportunity to sit down on. So I think the part that I, I was just talking to you, I'm sorry to cut about it, but it was actually the last piece that I was most interested in, and it was in regards to meeting goals for how many kids are hearing about college, doing the resume opportunities, and so forth, and just preparing them for college. And one of the last things on the agenda, it was actually skipped over, and then one of the girls who was there kind of called in and said, are we going to talk about this piece? And it was the idea of having a panel of students who have graduated from high school to come in and actually talk to other students their junior or senior year. And I'd made the suggestion that to have someone that would represent multiple options and do this like in the auditorium, but it would be someone who has done the four years, someone who has done the two years, someone who decided to take a flex year, what that was like for them, someone who decided not to go at all, went straight into entrepreneurialism, someone who maybe took their flex year while going to that first year of college and then did not continue, just so kids have this sampler platter of hearing every option possibly available to them. I thought that was an absolutely fantastic idea. It was also eye-opening as to, for me, because again, I've never sat in on something like this, but really eye-opening to the entire process of faculty puts into making sure that there are so many goals and priorities of the faculty that I was never aware of. It really was neat, and had a new level of appreciation and respect for the entire process that that goes into it.
The students were, it was a good group of students there, and they really spoke up and had really good ideas. It was great to hear from them. So their input was invaluable, I thought.
Health and safety. Do you want me to do that? One thing I just thought about a few. I'm new to this, and I don't think about taking notes, so if you want me to make the report, I've got better communication questions for me, I guess, but no, I'm fine with, okay. I mean, I, health and safety, it was pretty routine stuff, it's gorgeous, as far as going over student injuries, work with comp claims. And I don't think there were any new patterns of concern or things that came up that, not to say that injuries aren't, or we don't want to accept injuries as normal, but there wasn't anything that jumped out as unusual or especially worrisome. We got a review on the lockdown fire drills and ALICE updates. I guess we did accept, we have a quote, we've accepted it for a new antenna system that will allow EMS people to be able to communicate within the building, which has been an issue for a while. Is that this summer? Yep, that'll start this summer. And we talked about the funding for that. Got some outside funding. And then we got updates. The new balls and things like that at the elementary school, so I don't think there was anything else that jumped out.
The only thing that really jumped out, what it discusses, the impact of having a winter with very little or no snow. We had very few work comp injuries from slips and balls this year, which is nice. I mean, certainly no one people get hurt by any means.
Other than that. Just room keys of West Central Ed.
West Central Ed, we approved the teachers' contract, revised the budget for '23, '24, the proposed budget for '24, '25, calendar for next year. They also signed the lease agreement with Mowers for the ALC Beacon and West Central Ed offices. They talked about the SAIL program, which is Skills in Adulthood and Independent Living, that will start next year. They have one teacher hired, they will be advertising for three paras. And Lori said today they've got 50 kids signed up for next year. So that's good, and other schools looking at it that would like to come in too. What do you think?
What's that program?
They have to be, I would think seniors, right?
Yes, they're going to be seniors. Uh, seniors are older.
Yeah.
Or older, okay.
So it's in a separate building, but okay, very close. We're going to go see it at the next meeting, we're going to go up there and check it out. So they have like donations for a washer, dryer, and yeah, so it should be pretty cool to see how it works. So that was all for West Central Ed.
Transportation committee.
The transportation group is up for negotiations. We met with them for the initial meeting, went through the contract with them, they had brought up some things, some questions, and now the district will be getting back to them with their proposal.
When's the next meeting?
So Stephanie, I can sit down and look at the proposal. We did get, yeah, got a lot of feedback from the department to choose that, things we need to maybe include within our contract with them.
I'm good to meet, well, I knew him, but Paul Penney's now part of the contractor, so he'll be negotiating this time, which hasn't before. Found out he goes by PJ now, not Paul.
Pyro.
No, no, it's Mr. Pyro to me.
Elementary staff development.
Staff development, talked about getting more surveys up for next year so they could hone in on exactly what the teachers and paras want for training. The back-to-school will, for paras will be provided by West Central Ed. They're going to do a back-to-school program for all four, all four districts. November 27th, they're having a speaker in for the whole staff. Elementary's working a math curriculum for next year. Also talked about suicide prevention. Speaker program hopefully before school starts. And still discussing the peer observation idea and still talking about it, so that's not in the works yet. That was about it.
Wellness.
Yeah, the, the water units are being updated, still kind of ongoing. I thought it was interesting, the summer food service program. I actually didn't know that that, that was offered. I think it's a great way to kind of extend the reach of the community, kind of build some sense of school community as well, if more people participated in it. But the part that I wanted to bring up and talk about was students that are on the listing for free or reduced meals. That goes to the state, the state is offering an additional $40, if I understand this right, an additional $40 per student per month for, yeah, for summertime. To help with.
Direct to the family?
Yeah. Forty dollars per student per month, so if they qualify for free or reduced lunch. So obviously as a way to get more people to sign up for programming, you know?
One of the bummer's is you can't, if you, it's still important to sign up to get those this accurate, but signing up now, you can't get it this summer.
So it's if you are already part of the program.
But if you're signed up the next summer, you got, even though we don't, you know, free and reduced lunch is not that.
Right. Well, because everybody, yeah, because everybody gets the free lunches now, but last year when this was brought up, I asked the impact, and it was like 20% that were missing, and then the financial impact of that, which was around a quarter of a million dollars. I brought up the idea that why don't we add registration, because like when my kids went to St. John's, St. Andrews, it was right there, it was part of the packet. And if I didn't fill it out, I was getting a phone call. 100% of the students filled it out. Daughter did a great job making sure that was done. I understand there's more students here, but when we're talking about that kind of money, and we have registration, we have everyone captive, I, I, help me understand why we are not making a stronger effort, and I brought that up last year. Even if we can recover 10% of that, it's $125,000.
Yeah, and we do, we, we have pairs that are calling in the fall.
But at registration, when they're coming in to get a Chromebook, fill out that form to get the Chromebook, you fill out the form for everything else, making sure that that form is done.
It's an enrollment back then every year when they enroll. The form is there, and we do reach out to them, especially with our Hispanic community. We have three pairs calling, trying to get them in. Just as an update on that, and the whole EBD program, we do have 560 students now that are receiving the summer EBD program.
So what percentage of that is then recovered of that 20%? What would that represent? It still seems like a no-brainer to me. They're at registration, some sort of a system in place, this person didn't fill it out, and you ask them right there. You can't even go to Quidditch without saying, do you want a gas card? Do you have a gas card? Can't go to TJ Maxx, don't get any ass back for funds if you want a TJ Maxx card. And just to simply say, hey, I noticed you haven't done this. Whether or not, it would mean a lot to.
Some people just choose not to fill it out. Just choose not to.
I don't think we can literally force them to.
A lot of money being left on the table.
I'm not sure we can technically force them.
No, be forced, but some, somehow, that's a, that's a large amount of money. Anyway, that was my two cents.
We got updates about the speed and agility program. Updates about the insurance, employee insurance incentives. Now have EDBs for the, that the trainers are bringing around, which is huge. Moving on to LNC. We met last week and talked a little bit about scheduling for next year, next year's calendar, and the fact that there's, there were changes in the contract, which meant there's changes that need to be addressed in the calendar, and I think we'll talk about those later in the agenda. District technology.
Steve, discussing on that, C-Mets will be done the end of June, but we have everything in place to work through ARVI, so we're good to go. Chromebook collections are the end of May. We won't have to order new Chromebooks because last year we ordered enough for two years. Cameras are being updated.
Moving on to administrative reports.
Mr. Beckett. Yes, Mr. Neat Felton is planning a future kids, had an opportunity to start campus. Heard a lot about what's going on there. Few other dates, we've got Junior Job Shadow Day here Wednesday, as well as Awards Night. Seniors have their class trip, the 30th, graduation is the 31st. Less than two full weeks left to school, I think, for another classroom. I threw down some finals information, and as, also as in previous years with the special, part for safety reasons and so on, I've had permission slips waiting for me to hand out to students. For those that are in good behavior and academics standing, parent permission. One thing that I did write down here, but I'm sending out to parents at the end of the year too, is we have to adjust the grade route because of Main Street and torn up. So it starts off the same, normal, but then once we turn down Main Street four, we're just going to go straight across by the hospital and head down Second Street Southwest by the trailer court, trailer park, and then we'll head back just straight on that, all the way down Second Street, and then hit Fifth Avenue, which takes, take a left, and we head right back to the four-way stop, and then we head down Riverside and Mullet, where we always have the, the car wash. So I'll get a piece of information out to parents that that adjustment had, which we talked about last week.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Seventh grade last Friday had a trip to the Hempert Zoo, and then they had activities down in the park. And then they came back and finished the day with a movie. Every year before COVID, we did like a river rally with the seventh grade, and that has kind of stopped. For some reason, we used the Sock watershed district for that, and they've kind of stopped that. So the seventh grade wanted to continue something, so they, for the past few years, they've done the Hempert Zoo thing, which the kids really enjoy. They, they do a very good job. The last couple of weeks, the parochial schools, sixth graders have been in to do a shadow day, that continues to be a success. It's, it's an opportunity for kids to come in and see what it's actually like to be a seventh grader. They come in and they pair up with a seventh grader, and they go to classes. We don't do anything special for them that day, it's just a normal day, so they see it. And the following day after that, I go to the school and answer a bunch of questions that they had from what they, what they experienced. So it's worked out pretty well the past few years. Couple Mondays from now is our final end-of-the-year incentive day, and we'll be doing our typical Valley Fair thing. And then I would say for the elementary, high school, and middle school, our end-of-the-year assessment, benchmark data is complete, and now we're all three of us are in the process of putting together intervention lists for next year. So we're ready to go on day one with students. And when I say benchmark data, we're, we're looking at academic data along with behavioral data. Any questions about middle school today?
Thank you. Ms. Pearson.
Yes, grades K and 1 are also going to be going to Hempert Zoo, and they go on May 30th, and they always have a great day there too. Family roller skating night, like we said, was a great success. They probably have more adult roller skating than we ever have with their students, and the kids just love that. It was amazing when I asked Jan, I said, so many years have you been doing it? And this was the 25th year that she has been doing roller skating here at Mowers. And the kids still look forward to it, it's just a highlight, it's a great way to end the year, so that was amazing for years. Are roller skates the same?
Well, they are from the same gentleman, I believe, so.
From Mollory, yes. So, yeah.
It's true, yeah.
Oh, it's my time.
Well, he does update and he does fix and stuff, but, and he does, it's so nice, he has those nice wooden parts on the wheels, and he brings it to us and takes it out on Friday nights. Yeah, so it's.
He doesn't have a regular roller skating place, right?
No, not anymore.
Okay.
He just runs out and skips. Then elementary curriculum updates, the elementary I know is excited to get a new curriculum, they're getting Math in Focus, and they will be doing training on that August 29th. Other things in elementary that Kevin has been getting quotes on for our POs, his assistive technology for our special education students, and other students also use that too for typing, for writing, and also for reading, where you can talk to text, I'll take for you, and things like that. We're expanding our decodable textbooks in libraries and the classrooms, especially for P1, we learn in letters that we need more decodable text so kids can practice words and the symbolic skills that they are learning in literature. And then also, like Rob was saying about the interventions, we will expand and purchase Core 5, which is a literacy program that we can use for kids in interventions, and it definitely places kids and shows us where the gaps are, and we can just focus on those skills, and so we're looking forward to that. And then lastly, what's probably the most important is just to thank you for a great year and for your support, and it's hard to believe that we're at the end of May again on another school. So thank you.
Questions? Ms. Winter?
I think most people have realized the walking path is completed, they got the dirt level ready to see, but with the rain that we're going to get this week, it's probably not a really good time to see that area. I was hoping the transitions on the approaches and the new concrete curbing would get done a little quicker. There's about a four-inch gap between our approaches and where the curb is. They've got it taped off, but hopefully nothing happens with that, because I've seen a lot of people biking on the path already. Continue to hire for our vacancies. So far, we've been able to replace our, those, except for the most recent vacancies that we've had. The principals have done an outstanding job of filling those positions, and they're probably most keenly aware of how much that hiring process has dramatically changed in the last couple of years. It's been very difficult, so appreciate all they've been doing with that. And the legislative session wrapped up last night. 1,300-page Shawn of the Spill was passed a little before midnight last night. I did not say up all night reading was in that, that's going to have to be gone through by the experts. So what actually is in there, I know there is, or there are some changes in the Earn Sick and Save time. There's some changes in there on the Read Act, there's some changes in there on how districts determine polling places, how districts replace vacant school board members. We'll probably find out the next couple of weeks, and resource training does have another section, but it's occurring while we're still in school, so we won't go into that. But I'll continue to update the board, and certainly at the next meeting, we'll hopefully know everything by then. I do know one thing, there's no additional funding in their bridge.
Questions for Mr. Winter? Moving on to, moving on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. And a second?
A second.
Highlights or?
You'll see there are a lot of fill-in with those teachers, of those positions that were vacant. Especially some coaches for this year that were acted on upon the last meeting when the tracking mass, for additional coach, that coach was hired. And just kind of filling in some of the other smaller pieces for next year as we plan forward, and some of the resignations and. These are action items.
Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to treasurer's reports. Stephanie's not here, so.
A motion, a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make this. And a second?
A second.
Coach, Iden Vogard couldn't be with us tonight, she's there on the first day of the playoff out there. I sat down and didn't eat with her today to talk about just anything out of the ordinary. She said, well, if anybody's really following this on a month-to-month basis, you'll see a big discrepancy from March to April. In March, we only received one payment from Minnesota for funding, and they're supposed to be sending us two payments per month, for whatever reason, they sent us one. And we got three payments last month, so that kind of evened everything out, and you'll notice on the year-to-date in conferences, as we get closer, then the year that gets closer 100%, because it's a percentage of not only funding the expenditure, so nothing out of the ordinary, and obviously we'll wrap this up for the fiscal year next month.
Questions or comments regarding the financials? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report as listed, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to action items. First would be donations and gifts, a motion to accept the donations as listed. And a second?
Second.
Get some nice donations from the narrow line, like it's a bus company, Duro, Skuff, and Speech, St. Rose Alliance for dancing uniforms, and as we get invariably from time to time, even through the tech schools, or sometimes directly from the manufacturers, we get donations of engines, which obviously will be within our small engine program.
Questions or comments? Roll call, vote?
Pat?
Yes.
Yes. Eric? Melissa? Yes. Mark?
Yes.
So the next part of the agenda is approving policies. The board is kind of governed by policies that need updating every couple of years for the most part, and the policy, the, the process for getting policies approved is first they go to a committee who reviews them. A lot of the updates come from Minnesota State School Board Association, that we can customize them or not. And then the process is for them to be reviewed by the board two times, and then on the third time, there's a vote to either approve or not approve the policy. And these three policies have already been discussed at two previous visits, so this is the, this is the opportunity to approve these policies. First being Policy 410 regarding family and medical leave, motion to approve. I'll make a motion. And a second?
A second.
No changes since first reading.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to policy, or to item C, Policy 424, policy regarding license status. Motion to approve. So move. And a second?
A second.
No changes since first reading.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this policy, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item D, Policy 425, policy regarding staff development and mentoring. Motion to approve this policy. So move. And a second?
A second.
No changes since first reading.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item E is TOPS Plan. A motion to approve the TOPS Plan? So move. And a second?
A second.
Background?
Just a plan that we've had in place for a number of years. TOPS plans are training option plans. It's a way in which the teachers can take professional development and individualize it for themselves. And over the course of the years, it's changed a little bit. The biggest thing that we've changed, I think, or agreed to change in the plan is to give teachers a larger window to complete it in. It's worked out very well in the past for the teachers. You don't think it really changes on this plan. Plan is the dates that correspond to end of this year and next quarter. It's all a change.
So one day?
One day. Well, yeah, it's, the day is actually on the calendar, but it's that day, that time, seven and a half hours that they do their professional development for that.
Right, okay, got it.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the TOPS Plan, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item F. Resolution to renew membership in the SHSL. This is an annual issue. Motion please?
Asso moved.
And a second?
Second.
Quarter cheaper than it was last year.
Quarter.
That means our enrollment didn't change that much and they didn't do anything with their budget. So it's.
Is it based on enrollment?
Yeah. And it's, well, it's based upon enrollment, whatever number they set based upon the enrollment that corresponds with the budget that they create. So it's evenly across the state of Minnesota. But they must be doing a little bit better. It's about $71 cheaper than two years ago. We all know what happened during COVID.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item G. Regarding officials and ticket taker pay. Motion to approve this school. And a second?
I've included the spreadsheet, obviously with the recent settlement of the teacher's contract. All those, both ticket takers and referees and judges were taken out of that. We actually agreed to take out of that. You'll see the spreadsheet I had Jonathan put together that kind of did a comparison across some of the schools in the area. And I worked with Jonathan on that a little bit. And then the most important thing I did was that payroll that this manager go through to make sure there's no violations of wage theft or that everything fell behind that. That's the spreadsheet you see in front of you. You'll even see across the area, some of the areas that the referees, especially the judges, have gone up considerably because of just supply and demand, hard to get those people. Summer for hours, summer for even.
Questions or comments?
You will see the varsity referees or umpires under. They tell us what we did. The associates.
Standard.
Standard for that. They get it from the contract.
Okay.
Motion to approve? Aye?
Aye.
All, approve? All those opposed, aye? Sorry. Well, item H, designation of identified official authority for education identity access management. Motion? And a second?
Second.
Annual bookkeeping thing?
Annual bookkeeping, having the authority to be the proxy administrator for the site. And then she allows me to be the proxy administrator for the site, of which I can allow other people to do it. They need somebody other than super parent to do it first and then I get granted authority from her.
Sure. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next is contract. Item I, motion to approve?
Asso moved.
Building administrative and assistant contract. 23, 24, and 24, 25. The, any second?
A second.
Questions or comments?
So I don't know if anybody, you know, this is the first year that they're together.
And this involves? That preschool.
Three buildings, yeah.
Yes, so that three son, so they are all under one contract now.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item J. Motion to approve the revised schedule, school calendar 24, 25. And a second? Sorry.
Calendar had previously been approved by the school board in February. Since then, the settlements, with the settlement of the teacher's contract, it takes two days off the calendar. We have to do something with it. I ran some ideas by the principal committee of administration, the admit team. We talked about this. There's an opportunity there to put snow days back in it because Easter runs so late. And then obviously we met with LMC last week to get some of their ideas. This is kind of the recommendation we're bringing forward. It puts a snow day, the Friday before Easter, the first snow day would be the first snow day. The second snow day would be the Tuesday after the TOPS Plan Monday. Wouldn't really consider it unless the Easter is late in the month of April this year. If Easter was earlier in the month, I think we could look at some different options because you can still run the snow days by mid-April. But this is an option that discussed with the principals, the admit team. And then there was a discussion last week at LMC.
So this puts the last day on a Wednesday, happy on Wednesday.
Yep.
So we talked about it, the LMC meeting was, right now, we don't really have an e-learning plan.
Currently, we don't know.
And if we had had an e-learning plan, then it kind of gets tempting because you got those two, two and a half days at the end of the school year. But right now we don't, and that's where the rationale came to go back to the snow day option.
Unfortunately, if we were fortunate this year to have a winter, I planned last year. We didn't have any snow days. We have an Easter break. Obviously, the issue that you may run into is people see that on the calendar and they plan a long vacation over that point in time. I know that they're gonna miss two days of school, but we don't. They go on vacations. They don't, they'll plan a spring break trip some other time anyway.
So if we had an e-learning plan, we could be good.
Yes. We could still get one. I mean, we could still get one, but we just don't have one right now.
I personally spoke up that I liked the idea of it with so many jobs having positions that are off-site or remote work. I do think it's a great way.
What is a great way? An e-learning plan?
Yeah, start letting them step into what it is like to take that responsibility.
I'm sorry, the fire department's doing testing.
For the lower grades, it wouldn't be wrong then, you start introducing them to working off of the device. But for the older grades, I would be able to. Having a plan in place.
But the conversation, so that the conversation was, or the sense that I was getting from the board before is that we probably, if we were going down towards an e-learning plan, we'd want more virtual, we'd want more, more than what, more than what we had last year. Is that?
Correct. Yeah, consistent.
Is that correct or?
Yep.
Is that kind of what led to this kind of snow day plan? So everybody knows what, where they're.
Or synchronous type learning.
Yep, and I think that's a conversation for down the road.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I mean, e-learning from our perspective is not off the table. But since we kind of need, we need to get this calendar out there because it's late. For good reason with the contract and things like that, but that's where this plan came.
So was, so you mentioned that the last day was a Wednesday. Was there concern brought up about it being a Wednesday?
It's just tempting if you had two days. You know, you're, you're cutting back two days and you're, you're two and a half days into that last week of the school.
I see.
It's tempting to say, oh, I could, could we figure out a way not to do that? But the administrative team met also in conclusion with this. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion for? Motion to close the meeting?
Asso moved.
For the purpose of negotiations. And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.